Tonight, August 1st, 2024, Planning and Zoning Commission. Paige, could you help us with the roll call?
Dan Larson?
Present.
John Meyer?
Here.
Doug Ben Scooter?
Here.
Stephanie Garner, Dave Huser, Kate Ping, Kathy Olson.
Here.
All right, so that's four out of seven, so that's a quorum. So, item C of our agenda is approval for tonight's agenda.
Approval.
Second.
All right, motion's been moved and approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, that motion passes. Item D, approval of two sets of minutes from the last two meetings, June 6th and July 2nd. Ask for a motion on those.
I move that the meetings be approved.
We have second?
Second.
All right, motion's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes as well.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, just checking. All right, we have no public hearing portion, so we'll move into regular business. Item one, is a plot of survey for parcel Q Q on 218 Second Street Southeast, Beverly. Paige, can you walk us through the agenda memo?
Yeah, so what happened here is Kaiser Porson owns their parcel, the prime parcel where the business is on. They own a strip of what was previously a vacated alley to the north, and then they recently purchased the lot, empty parking lot, to the west. They are requesting this plot of survey to combine all three of those parcels into one to expand their business, and they will be back, as long as this gets approved, they'll be back next month with a special provisional use with what their intentions for expansion are.
Okay.
And maybe not next month, it might be, depends on when they get all their plans finalized.
Of course.
We're hoping next.
Yes, hoping next month.
Well, yes. The fifth of September, at the end of the board, yes.
All right, so tonight we're talking about plot of survey approval. Question I had, and maybe some others did as well, so it's currently zoned R4. What triggers rezoning of a parcel? Just procedurally, right? This is a plot of survey for a combination of existing lots, right? Lots, parcels. Does it fit in R4 use for its current use if it's rezoned or replatted, excuse me?
So, yes, the plat won't necessarily trigger that request for rezoning. That is just dependent upon the use with our special provision amendment that recently went through, that allows the funeral homes, mortuary excretorials, to be a special provisional use in any zoning district. So they will not have to rezone it with the special provisional use. Now, they could ask to rezone it based on the setbacks if they chose to go back.
Right. And then, as far as usage, it's a special provisional in any zoning district regardless, right?
Right.
Is what I heard, so it still triggers that for the use?
In order to do it, yeah.
And the current property is in R4, with flow, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but future, I think future shows it as, does future show it as R4? I don't remember. No, I gotta check, no.
Oh, shows it as commercial.
It's probably the commercial.
Yeah, and that's why I was asking the question, if there was a, an event like this plot of survey that would trigger something, understanding the use on this particular one is SPU regardless. Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion?
Not for me.
Okay. Well, I would move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of this plot of survey and parcel to the city council.
Second.
All right, motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, that motion passes as well. Item two, under regular business, is our plot of survey for parcel N N and O O. Kind of one of a pair of items here. That we've seen a couple times, but Paige, just formality wise, could you walk us through that memo?
Yep, this plot of survey is for the duplex located at 725, 729 Second Avenue Northeast. The, it was already rezoned. The intent with the plot of survey is if they chose in the future, they would be able to sell them as two single-family attached units, rather than it just being a duplex with one over on both sides.
Okay. So I know we had some questions, as this has been on our agenda before, how do we want to handle the new information? I know we have Beau with us tonight, and Paige, you know a little bit, so.
So, sorry I wasn't here in July, it was my son's birthday, so I chose the other option, but I did watch the video, so I think I can address your questions. So, I'm gonna kind of talk about these in tandem, Second Avenue and Ninth Street. If the plat's approved, what we're doing is we're taking that property line and we're just running it right down that common wall. This allows us to create two separate divisible family units, the thought being we're creating affordable housing, obviously we want to sell, but if you have an adjoining wall, it's gonna be more affordable housing. I think for background, to kind of help you guys conceptualize, this is almost identical to what you guys approved over in Centennial Oaks. So, when I watched the video, I kind of saw two topics of issues that were causing confusion. One was utilities and services. So, each one of those four units has its own water, utility meters, setup, sewer, shut offs, independent access, they're in their basements, furnished rooms, whatever. I don't know if it has two independent lines coming in for each unit, but in any event, either unit could shut off their own water if they want to, they're getting their separate utilities. The second issue I think everybody was getting hung up on was the condo distinction and the building code distinction. So, a condo has nothing to do with the structure of the building. A condo is a governing structure, governing entity to control those two units. Whether something's built to be a duplex or a condo, that's really the same structure. It's a dual family home, it's a twin home. So, this gets a little bit beyond my expertise, but when I talked with Lindsay Kaler to get her approval, and she, she, correct me if I'm wrong, I think she consents to this, her take was, there needs to be a one-hour firewall in place. Basically, a layer of sheet rock's gonna get you there to a one-hour firewall. So even in the 1970s, you got your layer of sheet rock to get that done. So, that's the major safety issue, but again, if you're gonna build that to be two single-family units, or if you're gonna build that to own it, you know, together and rent them out, you're gonna build that the same way. For a governing structure, then, we're not gonna use a condo, just in my opinion, that's kind of overkill for a twin home. So what we do is we create something called a common wall agreement. It's just a document that says, hey, if that joint sewer line that's coming in, we have issues and it's a problem, how do we fix it? Well, we're both gonna agree that we're gonna pay together to get that resolved. If lightning strikes that common wall and tears it right down the center, we're gonna work together to get that paid and resolved. So that's what that does. A condo would do some, a condo agreement would do something similar, but again, that's a mechanism if we had 20 different properties that we're managing, we just have two. So, the other thing that common wall agreement will do is it helps the aesthetic side of that. If we've got to re-site it, we're not gonna side one side green and one side, you know, red, we're agreeing that we're gonna keep that all a common element. So, I have put those together, I've given that to city administration, I don't know if it's found its way to you guys or not, but again, it's, you're looking at the same author that did the ones for Centennial, it's gonna be the same exact structure. Really, the only difference between this and Centennial is just the age of the structure that's there.
So, the one question I had was, what if the property owners resist change? One says, we need this, the other one says, heck no, I'm not gonna cooperate. Does it mean they have to go through, in essence, a litigation to get the thing settled?
Eventually, yeah, that's your end game, and that would be the same thing in a condo.
Well, yeah, a condo, you've got that other level of ownership regulation, whatever you wanna call it, that puts it together, so you'd be.
Same thing.
A condo association has, has a vote, particularly that, you know, at Centennial Oaks, there's four owners, so one can get overruled if he doesn't agree.
But if he doesn't agree. But if he doesn't do it, what do you do again, right? Hey, you need to pay this assessment, you know, go kick rocks, I'm not gonna pay the assessment, you're ending up in that same thing, you gotta go get a judge.
That's true.
And I know, part of our questions, Beau, I appreciate you looking into, and I think the commission felt it was outside of our expertise too, was, you know, from a building code from when these were constructed to what they would be today, you know, and that those codes are different, right? I think we can all say that. So by doing this at this time and approving it, you know, does that open up the possibilities that we have non-conformance or non-compliance of the existing structure that's structured that is being divided in a different way? And that's just what we didn't know. Again, our commission responsible for land use, not necessarily building code, that falls under the county as we've discussed, so I think that was just, you know, kind of an unresolved thing.
And yeah, I did talk to Lindsay, I'm not sure if that was on the same email with Beau or not, no, it would not create a non-conformance. In her eyes, in the county's eyes, the use is not changing. A single-family attached is the same as a duplex in building code eyes.
Right.
So yes, it was built back to the code when it was originally built, as we know codes change, but it would not bring it out of non-conformance just because of the change of the property line.
The singular layer of sheet rock simplified it for me, because when she said that, I thought, okay, I can follow that, I can find sheet rock, but beyond that, you know, it gets beyond me, but it's the firewall issue, that, that's what you want to protect.
Yeah, and I think what it really drove us to question, I guess, was, you know, current code, as I understand it and have read, you know, requires that all the way up to the roof deck, right? And not a common attic space, and that's just really where we got into, you know, vintage structure versus a modern structure.
Actually, I think that's been in the code a long, long time, between dwelling units, it's been that way.
Right.
Yeah, regardless of what kind of dwelling unit it's been.
Duplex, condo, common wall.
In both, you want to protect the fire from one side to the other, so regardless of ownership.
Okay.
And then, you know, you're breaking it into two parcels. Is there any setback requirements, or are you, with this common wall agreement, are you alleviating the setback requirement, because you've got two separate parcels now?
Between the two, so they refer to that as a zero lot line agreement, that's another way to call it, because on that common wall, there are no setbacks, right? You are, it's there, but all the other setbacks around the side would be the same.
So then if one of the owners, so it's sold, done, goes through, and one of the owners says, I'm gonna put a fence next, I have a dog in the back, where does that fence line go? On that line?
You'd have a fence right on that common line.
And if the other one says, I don't really want it, or move it back.
And then this starts getting into, you know, getting your guys' territory more than mine, you know, how far do you want that fence from any other lot line, right? So if the fence has to be six foot from another adjoining property line, well then you're gonna go to the common wall, you're gonna go six foot in, and you're gonna butt that fence up to the back of your building, six foot into your property, and then go.
Do we have that addressed anywhere in the code?
Fence can be on the problem line.
Right up to the front.
Okay.
But the key element is, is that if it's your fence, you probably need to be able to take care of it on your property. Yeah, that's not observed a lot, so.
Okay, other questions for Beau here? Or just about this?
I'm just curious, part of the Centennial Oaks issue had to do with insurance rates. How is that, is that applicable here at all?
Gotta be careful how I answer that, so I don't disclose any information, right? So, so I think their hangup was, they were a condominium regime, and I think insurance expense was higher because of that. So, we are not a condominium regime right now, we're not asking to be a condominium regime. I have not explored how this would impact our insurance rates from going from one to two, I'm not too worried about that.
Lots of twin homes in town.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of examples of what this is already in town, older structures, newer structures, if you have looked around, there's some twin homes that will do a small condominium regime. Dalstrom has two of them in the new addition behind Hy-Vee, one's a condo regime, and one is, what I'm explaining here, a common wall agreement, so they're around.
So one thing I was questioning last time, I think, too, a little bit, was, you know, just procedurally, you know, when we do this, because, you know, I do think we're setting a precedent with a couple of these, and that's fine, as long as we're consistent, I feel. So, you know, the, the plot of survey would pretty much designate, you know, the plan and the common wall as kind of the, the one option to describe that adjoinment. And then it really comes down to, like, zoning changes, if something triggers that or not, so what's, what's the order of those events? Do we have any clarity on that? Like, what's the appropriate message to someone who wants to do this plan if they're the owner of a condominium or a duplex?
I mean, I guess it would just be like, Bo did this instance, he first came to me wanting to do this idea. He asked, is there gonna be any major hiccups that I can see a staff going forward? And that very first response back was the zoning. One was not zoned correctly, the other one was. And then I said the water lines and the, that firewall separation. Those are the three kind of main keys that you want to make sure are in place prior to that plot of survey.
And I think a big thing, you know, if somebody comes to me in my office and say they, they want to do a version of this, we need common wall agreements, or we need a condo association, and I don't know to what extent you guys can enforce that, but that's critical, because otherwise we're teeing up people to have problems down the road.
Right.
And that is in our code, any single-family attached, we require covenants and restrictions to some sort of.
Right, yeah, right. And then, I know in these particular examples, I mean, they have, and maybe that just falls into duplexes, I mean, there's separate drives to an extent, right? I mean, there's access for both and that sort of thing. And I don't know that that would trigger necessarily, it wouldn't on these, so it's probably not a big issue, but, you know, in those instances, if there were driveways, I know there's some whips and some different things that, that do get triggered in that part of the code, but, so it sounds like, you know, talk to the city, understand zoning, and that's gonna be a judgment call based on the type of property, the location of the property, et cetera. And then, it's pretty much, if rezoning is needed, it's rezoned first, plot of survey second, if it passes some of the other must dos. Makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions I can answer for you guys? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I will move this planning and zoning commission recommend approval of the plot of survey for parcel N N and parcel O O to the city council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes. Item three, which is in tandem, but.
Second verse.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just kind of, we can skip the agenda memo notably here, please read it if you need to. Further discussion on this one from the commission? Is that a different location?
Same story.
Same request.
And you already answered the question. I'd move that the commission recommend approval of the plot of survey for parcel G G and H H to the city council.
Second.
All right, motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, that motion carries as well. Thank you. All right, item four on our agenda is the review of a plot of survey for parcel R R and S S at 413 Third Avenue Northeast, Waverly. Paige, can you walk us through that?
So another plot of survey.
Yeah.
What happened with this one is Justin Helmert is the owner of the property, he's unfortunately unable to be here tonight, they are on vacation. He wanted detached garage on the northeast side of his property, went through, tried to figure out how to get the approach to work with it, there was just not a whole lot of ways to keep it separated enough from his north property owner. When they marked out those property pins, they realized a good chunk of his driveway is actually on his south property's neighbor's property. And once that realization hit, then he's like, well, maybe we just use the current approach, move the garage to that back southwest corner instead, extend the driveway past the house on the south side, south side going back to that detached garage. So, part of the reason for the plot of survey was to get his whole driveway on his own property, but also to give him enough buffer that he will get a five-foot setback for the drive extended back to the detached structure. The neighbor to this south, it will be followed up by a deed, I have written confirmation from them that they are in supportive of this and a price, everything's agreed upon, that will be recorded as soon as and if this gets approved.
Okay.
Maybe you should have had the plot of survey done before he built the garage, the driveway the first time.
Well, that's the original driveway.
That may not have been him.
We can't blame him, it wasn't him that poured the.
Yeah, I know.
He's new to the area.
Looks like he bought it in 2023, so.
Yeah, I was just looking.
And even Robert and Emily to the south, they didn't know where those property lines are, I guess, they're kind of a hard area.
They probably assumed that it was all fine.
Exactly. Yeah, they thought maybe it was right at the edge or a foot or two, but.
Beacon's not perfect, but it's pretty close if you look at it most of the time.
It is, especially with this new area, only got it a lot closer on Spox.
Yeah, it's kind of like, wait a minute. Um, yeah, interesting and challenging all at the same time. Maybe just a question, I know detached structures trigger, you know, some size requirements where everything, does staff have any issues for the building proposal, or have you seen the building proposal yet?
We've seen the proposal, everything is within code.
Building a pretty good-sized garage. I would move the commission recommend approval of the plot of survey for parcel R R and S S to the city council.
Second.
We have motions been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes as well. Item five on our agenda, if we're ready, would be discussion of residential swimming pool code for the city of Waverly.
Yeah, so this is more just a discussion topic. How it got brought up is the county marked a plumbing and mechanical permit as pending city approval. I asked, what was it for, and they said it was for a swimming pool, and they just know they have to get city approval. And I said, well, typically that's done with a building permit and not a plumbing mechanical permit. And the response was, oh, well, we don't do permits for swimming pools. And so I sent them, as John and I discussed, I had sent over the section of the code stating above a certain foot and.
Capacity.
Five thousand square, or gallons, then it requires a building permit. So things are, the city's end of things were such as the location and size, because it's supposed to count against your accessory structure size. Now, I haven't gone back to them again, because I still want to have this conversation with you guys, because as John and I talked beforehand, is there a difference with swimming pools? I know we have the 5,000 gallons, we have the above two feet or, two feet or more, whatever it is, what if it's a temporary pool versus a permanent structure? Can the accessory size, a lot of people are built out to their 720, what if they want a pool? We're seeing more of them, a lot of them are going in without even coming to the city or county, even asking if a permit's required. So just kind of wanted to get an idea of your guys' thoughts, do we need to add, remove, change things? We can't obviously change what's in the building code, that's international building code, so I've gotta have those conversations with Lindsay, and maybe they don't do anything with it, it's strictly just our review of it, and that's okay, it's still a building permit though. But do we want to change any requirements in our city code, because we really don't have any in our city code? As far as the sizes and things like that?
I, I guess I can start, I talked to Paige about this, and, and I have a near neighbor that just got done building a pool, and when I asked him who reviewed it, he said, I built a six-foot fence, and anything inside that fence is mine, and it's nobody else's business.
But he has insurance, and they said the fence.
Well, and he said, the only person I talked to was my insurance man, and he said, as long as I had a tight fence, it was not accessible by anyone wandering through, that's all he cared. So, anyway, I, I, you know, I couldn't believe that we didn't require a building permit, and so that's why I started digging, and in 90.4, it does say, that any pre cavitated pool over 24 inches and greater than 5,000 gallons installed above ground needs a permit. Well, but then what is it permitted as? And so I started looking at the zoning ordinance, and it's pretty clear that it's an accessory structure, an accessory building. Okay, well, then, you know, it's pretty limited in size, and, you know, what is it, 720 square feet? So, if the person's got a garage, they can't have a pool, basically, because there's not enough, you know, they can't cover that much area. Well, one of the examples that they were giving us was Cedar Falls, and I looked at that, and the part that we were given piqued my interest to look at the rest of the ordinance, but in Cedar Falls, they can, you know, they do have a limitation on an accessory building, but a pool can exceed that. So you can have that double-guard garage, and you can put a pool next to it, and, you know, as long as it's there. I guess the other thing that bothered me about our ordinance is, I don't know if it's land use or code or whatever, but it seems to me that it ought to be secure. You know, I, I don't have a big problem with having a pool that exceeds the accessory building size, per se, but I think it ought to be secure so that the neighbor kids can't get into it. I really do. I, I put that kind of in a land use category as, as more opposed to, to whatever. And I think people that are building those pools, they do check with their insurance, and the insurance man finds out, he's not gonna be very happy if it's not secure, so, I don't know.
And the security is primarily a fence?
Pardon?
The security would be primarily a fence?
Well, yeah, I mean, they talk about, some places it's a 48-inch fence, some places it's a 54-inch fence, and my neighbor's is a 72-inch fence, and it's tight, you can't see through it. The only person who can see into his backyard is me, is when I'm on my patio. But, you know, I mean, and it doesn't bother me, you know, it's, it is what it is, but.
But it could be a chain link fence?
The ordinance is the examples they gave us said, yes, it could be.
Yeah, in the Iowa swimming pool code, which is more for municipalities, right? Not really for residential use, in fact says that, but, yeah, I mean, chain link is, it says no more than four-inch sphere or whatever, it can pass.
And yeah, our zoning code has never had anything about the fences or anything like that. I thought that might be something that the county looked at, to enforce the pool code and things like that, but it's not something. So I do agree that that's probably, my personal opinion would be that we need to have something in our code on that.
Yeah, so the challenge, I think, for me on this one, is, you know, what, what building permit do you get if it's not inspected by our building inspection?
Right.
Contractor, I'll call the county in this case, right? Yeah.
Well, if you issue a building permit, what is compliance or not compliance?
Yeah, they don't, they don't have anything.
Exactly.
Right.
In their code, right? So that makes it a challenge, I think, to say, and realizing it's in there makes sense to the extent that it should trigger some sort of review. But I think it's wrong to have it when there's no code that, or there's no, you have building code that supports it, that it's being inspected to.
Another one of my concerns with them is like the international swimming, so there's the international building code, and then there's the international swimming and SPAC code, there is a residential aspect of that. That code even lists specifically of how much room can be between the ladder and the edge of the pool, so a kid doesn't get stuff behind there. And so where, what. And so where, what point, we don't want to take on the liability of making sure that that's enforced. But is that for anybody? Do you just say you need to be in compliance with this international? It's on the contractor or owner or?
But who inspects it?
That's exactly.
I mean.
I just want to make sure that's not bring liability on to us. And that might be a question for our attorneys as well, but.
The code that you included here in our documents today, that's just for commercial and that doesn't include residential?
The Iowa one, the international isn't listed in our agenda here.
But just when you included the chapter 15 of the public health, Iowa public health. This just applies to commercial.
Correct.
Yeah, it's a good reference. I didn't look at every bit of the international one either, but.
The Johnson County looks like a pretty nice guideline. I mean, it's a two-page or a four-page guideline. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Somebody put a lot of work into it, at least.
And they require the pool construction drawings and/or the manufacturer specifications, which is great. But then again, who reviews those to ensure?
Well, you know, in that case, I'm sure the county does because they have it in theirs, right? Which Bremer County doesn't, so.
Oh, right.
You know, Johnson County has a document. They have something to inspect to. They have a plan.
Because they reference that international swimming pool and spa code.
Yeah, and Bremer County.
It would be interesting. I mean, it'd be worth maybe a conversation with Johnson County. Just ask them, who does the inspection? Is it somebody that's, I don't want to say certified, but competent in the, in the inspection of pools?
Is that part of their license? Probably as the inspector probably has certain.
Well, I think, you know, the challenge that we face, I guess, if we say that something has to be inspected, then to the international swimming pool code, let's say, the county would need to adopt it, I think, in my mind to have the guideline to go with as well, unless, it's pretty good, right? Unless there's something that, you know, if we have it in our code, then they'll inspect our code, you know, being adopted or whatever. That's challenging.
So suppose a contractor puts this in. And they, let's suppose that we have it set up that somebody will inspect this, but they fail to go to have it inspected. Is the weight then on the contractor?
Ultimately.
The liability?
Ultimately, it's still on the property owner because if you have an open permit that's not finalized, if you were to sell that property or whatever, I mean, that is.
Or something were to happen, I would imagine beyond the owner since.
Yeah. No, I think once you have a permit, it's fairly clear that, you know, it needs to be finalized and. Property owner, yeah, ultimately is who the property.
Yeah, the one thing I see, this Johnson County one, it is good, a good detail. It's clear and all that. But I see that as building requirement, building code, it doesn't have anything about size. How much can it be and occupy, you know, and that's what is land use. How big an accessory can you have in your backyard? Because can it cover 50%, 45%? Can it be in addition to a garage? You know, that's, you know, I could see the city adopting something like this, but that's not a planning and zoning thing. I think the accessory size is, is our issue. And, you know, how big, how much backyard can they cover? I don't know.
Yeah, do you allow them to go above the accessory structure size, but you still have to meet the impervious coverage of 40 or 50% depending on what the zoning district?
Well, the other challenge, even as the code's written, seeing it here, you know, it says prefab, right? What if you decide to build it piecemeal and you do not buy a prefab pool and you decide to dig a hole? We don't have anything that says you can't do that necessarily, right? Trigger wise. So.
And the question really was all, you know, ends up being, do we want to regulate having a pool?
But I almost think you have to because building code says you have to have a permit if it's over 5,000 gallons.
Our code does limit the size of accessory buildings. And that is an accessory structure.
Yeah. So I think we are already regulating. It's just to what degree.
So there's a permit that's required, which you're saying now we've regulated it, now we have to inspect it then? If we give them.
Well, this is the problem. The only thing we would inspect right now is size and setbacks. We would not, well, except mechanical and electrical code, we do have those adopted codes and they have to comply to that. So the water supply's got to have a backflow preventer. The drain has got to go to the sewer instead of out the street. And, you know, it does have to follow those things. But the question is, is can they, you know, if, if they've got a 10,000 square foot lot and they got a 24 by 24 garage, and can they put a pool that makes it exceed the 800 square feet, you know? Can, can they do that? Well, right now, no, they can't.
Okay. If they get a permit for it.
Yeah, if they just build it.
And there are several that are currently in town that if I had to get sort of both that, they just didn't get a permit.
I mean, do we?
Go after them for it. I mean, we're going to have to be enforcing it more.
It's got to be consistent.
So I think, I think, you know, to me, there's a lot that I liked in the Cedar Falls example. Because, and I like, and I'll say this openly, is that I like that it's an exception to that. You know, but then at the same time, I think there's, there's kind of a fine line. You know, the way the city code is, if you were to put a hot tub, right, that's less than 5,000 gallons typically, I hope. I don't know the difference between a spa and a hot tub, but they're listed separately. So.
But that's above two feet. Nobody gets permits for hot tubs.
Yeah, so.
They're over two foot deep.
So kind of these questions, right? So hot tubs are in or out or not. And then, you know, pools are one thing. And then, and I know the code says by depth and volume, which is good. But, you know, a lot of the pools that I've seen at least have been the soft-sided, you know, seasonal pool, I would call it, right?
That's a good point.
And it doesn't have a drain and it's guaranteed to be running off a drop cord probably.
Right.
And it doesn't have a water supply, right? That's the garden hose.
Right.
So those aren't going to have those mechanical and electrical permits. Now, if a deck comes into play as some of these other things, that's very clear, I think, in the city slash county code. So it's kind of.
Even if it doesn't trigger a mechanical or electrical code, it's still over the size that should require a permit.
Yeah, because I mean, I mean, there's a lot of gray in what we have here, so.
Nice kind of words you got there.
It is, yeah. So, so it obviously needs some revision. My opinion, and I think you've heard our commission's opinion is, you know, I think, you know, some clarity between the county and the city needs to be established. And obviously some revision to the language in the code to, to cover these different types of aquatic devices, I'll call them. Would be where I think this commission.
Is it clear in our accessory structures that pool is or is not included?
No. I mean, yes and no. It doesn't come out and say pool, but it says a structure relating to.
The way it defines.
Comfort or something?
I mean, you, you look at, you know, accessory structures. If you look at, or you start at accessory structure, the definition of an accessory building, the term accessory building shall mean any building which is an accessory structure, quote unquote, as defined in this chapter. So you go to structures and accessory structure, the term accessory structure shall mean any secondary structure located on the same lot, which is a, on which a principal structure is located, provided that such secondary structure complies with the following. One, it's subordinate. In other words, it's not another dwelling house. Contribution, it must contribute to the comfort, convenience, or necessity of the occupants of the principal building. Well, comfort and convenience is a swimming pool. And location shall be located, you know, located on the same lot as the principal structure. And of course, then you go to accessory buildings and that's where it limits it to 800. Well, it's different sizes for 8,700 square feet, it's 720, not to exceed 30%. For 8,700 to 13,000, it's 720. Any building not more than 720, total of 800 and it goes up. So if you've got more than an acre, you could have 2,000 square feet.
And so we have lots of pools, private residential pools in the community, okay?
And so.
And so at what, I mean, never having had to go through any kind of a permitting process before, they all have friends who have built pools and spas or whatever, and have never had to be, had to have a permit for that. How does it get communicated or how do you even find out that someone says, I want to put a pool in and?
So that's what it's always been. I mean, I've been here almost 10 years now. And the entire time it's been like, hey, I want to install a pool. Okay, how big is it? So we do field those calls sometimes. If it's over that 5,000 gallons and the two feet, we do send them to Bremer County. We've always sent, I mean, that gets back to bed. We would always send them back to the county to fill out a permit. We in our zoning office always just looked at the size and the location. I never questioned what they look at that time. And then it just recently got brought up because they didn't say, no, we don't do a permit. So I think with all of the turnover, I think it's a good idea to have that clarification on what's allowed. But I still want to see, do we want to limit it to that accessory structure size? Or in those accessory structure section of the code, it goes the size limitations. No, that's not the section I was thinking of. The yard exceptions section is where I thought we could maybe stick it in there where it talks about decks, patios, fences, things like that. You could have a pool and then you could have your guidelines saying it can exceed the accessory structure and the fencing. Because we don't have anything about fencing right now.
It could be added to the accessory building breezeway section.
Or over there, yeah.
There as well, you know, and you can, area limitations, you can make swimming pool an exception.
So yes, in a roundabout way, as John pointed out, if you read through all of those lines, you should. But to the common person, they're not going to go through those steps and see, oh, I guess I need a pool. They'll probably do a control F, search the code for the word pool. And if it's not in there, they're going to think it's not regulated.
Well, and especially if it's not what most would consider a permanent structure.
Right.
The seasonal ones, which.
I think he brings up a good one. The seasonal pools that are disassembled, you know, it's a four-foot pool, 15-foot in diameter. And, you know, and they take it down and put it in the garage every, every fall.
So maybe on that, do we just require, do we still want, what is your ideas on fencing? Would we do more like a plot thing, just ensure you're, okay, you can put it up. We don't have concern signs or anything like that. But I want to make sure it's protected to protect the safety of anybody else in the neighborhood.
And I kind of cringe if they stick it in the front yard.
Well, the Cedar Falls did like that.
I know, they did. I don't want to, you know, but I have seen those soft side pools in front yards.
Right, yeah, it should be included.
Right. So we should probably touch base on all of them for specific requirements, but maybe.
Our accessory building doesn't, you're not allowed to put it in the front yard.
Right, yeah. So I thought already covered in that section. So what else are you looking for from us on this topic?
More of a, just an idea, do you want them to be extended past the allowable size? Do you want to require fencing? And do you want there to be a differentiation between a permanent structure pool versus the one that's taken up and put down for a year? Those are kind of the three topics I'm looking.
Does the state of Iowa have any guidelines that we fall under with regards to pool and having a safety barrier?
Only if it's public or subject to public use.
Oh, municipality or.
So then it gets back to their insurance.
Prairie Ridge, their pool is subject to state law.
Right, so if somebody puts in a pool in their backyard and they go, ah, you know, I don't need to really put a fence in. And then somebody comes over and falls and drowns, it's their insurance that covers it, you know? And it's, they're, I mean, they're an idiot for not having a pool, I mean, having a fence protected.
But yeah, those little blowed ones, do you require them to put in a fence just for that for a couple of months out of the year? Or they come up one day and took it down the next day?
It's pretty clear in all of these codes, if it's over two foot deep, it's supposed to be secure.
And that's what international building codes has to. So like our building codes, what we adopted are not the Iowa codes, it's the international building code. So their swimming pool to fall under those same.
It's always been a challenge to me though, is like, you know, for example, you have a 52-inch tall side. How, how do you just fall into that, right? I mean, it's, it is the fence in a certain regard.
Except those pools, those seasonal ones, they have a ladder.
True, but you don't fall into a ladder, right? Like an in-ground.
But a four-year-old climbs up a ladder and head falls in.
What if you've got a pool coming off?
Brackets that hold it. I mean, look, you know, everybody can climb up. You know, the edging where they hold the two together and there's always a way to get in.
And you could have an above-ground pool coming off from a deck.
Yeah.
Which I have a friend that had that over in Lake Delhi.
But decks of that height were required to have railings and other things, right? I mean, it becomes a barrier in itself.
Not if it's right against a pole.
On that side.
Yeah, on that side.
Right. But, you know, if it has stairs, if it has height, you know, to get to that sort of elevation, I'm thinking. So I think the challenge is, you know, some of these, I mean, it had door alarms and it had gate alarms and it had levels of intensity that I think are pretty extreme, right? So fundamentally, I feel like the question is, you know, currently the city doesn't have a city pool. You know, it has the upper option for certain times of the week. You know, what is the, what is the position, what is the impression the city wants to have on this, you know, because?
I don't, I, I think that it's an issue that goes well beyond whether we have a city pool or not.
Correct. Like I said, I.
It's just if it hasn't been enforced, is now the time to enforce it.
That's, that's the tough, that's the tough one. But, you know, I guess I expressed it again, you know, I think it should be located like an accessory building. I would support the idea of having it exceed the, the limits for accessory buildings if a pool is in there. And I think it needs to be secure, whether that's done through the building code or listed somewhere in our stuff, I don't know. And I think, you know, seasonal pools, same way, they should not be, they should be located just like a permanent pool. You know, and, and secure, whether they get an electrical or plumbing permits, you know, I don't see that, but, you know. But I don't think they should be exempt from electrical and plumbing. If they got a permanent water supply and a drain. I know that if, if it's a permanent pool, it's going to have a filter system and a backwash system and that has to go somewhere. The one I know of, it goes through the side of his house and into his floor drain. So, I mean, he's, he's not letting it go out in the street.
Does that, does that thought apply from a security perspective, I guess, to hot tubs and spas?
That's a good question.
Do you have that chapter 90 still open? Does it, under building code, that chapter 90? Because does that specifically say pooling exempt? Yeah, that says, well, that says prefabricated swimming pools.
That are less than 24 and are not greater than 5,000 are exempt from permitting.
So it really doesn't say anything about hot tubs?
I just think that's a gray area that could be addressed.
So, I mean, if your hot tub is over 24 inches deep, it would require permitting.
Yeah, which I don't, honestly, if somebody wants to put a hot tub in the back of their yard and it's three feet high, let them do it. I mean. yard, and it's three feet high, let them do it, I mean, it's-
And I, I don't think you need a permit-
Maybe it's an exception that needs to be added, the same hot tubs are accepted, except in hot tubs or spas that are for, you know, you know, one to six people or something like that.
And they're covered.
And a lot of them, most of them are.
Mostly they are.
Most of them, and a lot of them nowadays, have a locking cover on it too, that claps and, so yeah, that could be an exception because-
And typically, that is gonna trigger a building, or at least an electrical permit, right, because of the power needs.
Okay, well, I've got some direction. I'll have a conversation with the county and get some clarification on their end of things in these different-
There's another philosophical thing here that bothers me a little bit, is that she said, you know, the memo we got said, "Oh, we don't inspect pools, or we don't permit pools." Wait a minute, it's not up to them to be interpreting city ordinance to decide whether or not permits are issued. I mean, it's pretty clear that there's supposed to be a permit for those over 5,000 gallons and two feet. It's not their prerogative to say, "No, we're not gonna issue permits," and I hope there aren't other things out there that are saying, "Oh, we just don't issue permits for that." I mean, I hope we have a discussion about that.
And to Kathy's point, for the people that have already done it, geez, well, he did it, so why can't I? Why did, you know, why do I have to do it? He didn't say, "Well, he was lucky that he didn't get caught, and now you're unlucky because you have to follow the guidelines of the code."
And I have those conversations on all kinds of topics all the time. So it's gonna happen, but yeah, it's, unfortunately, it was the code, they should have as well. They happened to get it in without any of us seeing. And it, and that's kind of the fine line of when did it happen? If it was recent, make them go back and do it, but what if it's two years ago?
Yeah. It's just like all the many, many, many decks that are built on houses without permits.
That are now coming to be rebuilt, and I say, "Sorry, you can't rebuild as is because you, the first one wasn't permitted."
Yeah.
So on a, on a seasonal pool, are they required to do it every time they put it up?
The permit? Um, whatever. That's a good question.
I would say no.
I wouldn't say no unless something is changing.
So if they move it towards the other direction?
I don't disagree, I'm just trying to understand.
I know, too, that's a good question.
No, because your, if fence was required, it still should be the same. If your location changes, I guess maybe let us know, but it still should be in the side of your yard, so no, I-
I mean, even if they move it from the west side of the yard to the east side of the yard-
It's still-
As long as it's still fenced in the fenced area.
As long as it's still in the backyard and fenced in, I don't-
And as long as you're not increasing the size or anything like that.
But that's, that was gonna be my next follow-up question, right? What if this year I have a 16-foot, next year I want a 20-foot?
Yeah.
And then a 24.
I think you should, just because I think we need to have some sort of maximum size, whether it's your size of your impervious coverage, or if you're allowed, I, I'd have to look up a common pool size. If it's 200 square foot over your accessory structure, I think there needs to be some sort of maximum.
I like that idea. That covers a lot of that expansion issue.
It does, and then I think the challenge too, then, is, is, you know, upon sale of property, right? Let's say this guy had the pool, now I bought the property, I want a pool, do I have to get a permit again, or can I just do it because he had it?
New owner, he's gotta look through the same guidelines, so he knows what was included, because now he's gonna be liable for that pool. So I would say-
Building permit, though, specifically.
Building. I know it's hard, because then you have to pay another fee, just like that increasing by two feet, it's like-
Well, I think it's less than that, it's, it's, how do you know? Like, how, how does the public know that that's required?
Or what if they just left their pool behind, and no, then you wouldn't need a building permit for it?
Yeah, and then, maybe just a strange follow-up question, just later, right? So like, in the fall, when everybody drains the pool, I mean, that's going down the storm drain, right? If it's a temporary pool.
It's not supposed to.
Right.
No, it doesn't.
If it's, if it's a chlorinated pool, it's not supposed to go down the storm drain.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it.
That's city ordinance.
On a pool.
On anything, if it's got chlorinated water.
Hot tub.
Technically, when the city flushes hydrants, they are to dechlorinate before they discharge.
No, it's good, I'm trying to learn more about that.
Because they got this fancy little gizmo that they put the thing to on the back of the truck.
Just from the perspective, right, when everybody starts draining these, right, that's gonna go down. I know it's not supposed to.
But yeah, that would follow your Water Works code or whatever. But no, I think we've got something we can work towards.
And one of, you know, you had expressed, or we talked about the concern, geez, if we do require a permit, and geez, we do have to have somebody that has to review a pool's construction, then it's a part, then we hire, as a part of the permitting fee, there's a dollar amount, right? We have a consultant, whether we find it in Cedar Falls, Des Moines, or wherever, they would come up and inspect the pool at two, you know, once, you know, at four stages or something, I don't know.
Yeah, I have to reject my job.
And then, and then the person putting in the pool go, "God, my permit's gonna be more than the pool."
Right.
And they'd say, "Maybe I won't put a pool in."
Right.
But I mean, we can always overcome, you know, those things like, gee, how do we get, you know, how do we have people inspected? Well, don't we pay people that are here to inspect stuff now? For electrical, for, you know, plumbing, for all those.
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't want to fault the county here too, you know, I think they're, they're cognizant of what requires inspection and what that means, right? If they don't have code to follow, a building code to follow, for example, I mean, they do measure setbacks and they understand, right? And I think, I don't want to speak for the county on this by any means, but I think their intent, if they were to issue a building permit for a pool, it would be for the purpose of, hey, we inspect setback size, and we communicate with the city, right? So those, those are kind of the things that they're trying to move, versus all of these other inspections that they don't.
Right.
Okay, so you have what you need for now from us.
Yep.
We'll move on to item six. I think this paint might still be wet.
Right, yeah, so I apologize for getting on there yesterday. I put it on as soon as Lindsay had sent it over, and I said, "I will see if they feel comfortable giving our recommendation, if not, then not." Basically, what's happening here, and I apologize, I don't have a agenda memo on it, she sent it over asking, the plat is on there solely to show what is being rezoned. They're not doing, creating a plat of survey, they just did that for display purposes to see that three acres. It is being sold as one full parcel. That three acres is going to be rezoned to commercial from ag, with the intent of being an ag retail business selling fences and gates. They've already gotten the approval with the DOT for the entrance as is. If it changes uses, the DOT will determine if it is going to increase the traffic. If it ends up increasing traffic, then they're gonna have to put the frontage road in. But as the expectation's right now is, it's fine with the entrance that's already there.
Hmm, so forgive me for not understanding that. So the, the larger parcel is like 24 acres. One more time on this three-acre TBD plat of survey, that's happening or not?
No, it's not happening. It is not being platted off, they just created it to show-
Okay.
-what is being rezoned.
So the entire parcel's being rezoned?
No, just the three acres. The, the rest of it, you can do just three acres. We've got it out by Wells Hollow, the full parcel's like 20-some acres, a section of it residential, a section of it's commercial. So this will remain 24 acres, that three-acre corner section will go to commercial, the rest will remain ag. But that thing's being parceled off.
It'll remain one parcel.
Yep.
Okay.
And this is in the city limits?
No, it's right outside, so it'd be two mile, it's kind of like that two-mile review, it's right outside of city limits. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned that at first.
The east property line is the city limit line.
Yeah, so, okay, so it's interesting, I didn't know that, but that's good to know. So this falls under county rules for structure and setback and all that. Do we know sewer or septic?
Septic.
And that would require something new for this new structure, and even though it's on the city limit property line, pretty much?
Right, we don't have, it's not inside city limits, so we can't force it because-
There's nothing, I mean-
And we don't have sewer to it, so it's farther than 300 feet away anyways.
So the church is septic?
Correct.
Interesting.
Well, our land use plan puts that whole corridor as commercial, so I think it would be pretty tough for us to say no, that, you know, when I first saw the thing and didn't realize it was gonna be commercial, I thought, "Oh, there's splitting it off for residential dwelling," and I thought, "No way, you know, I don't want to see that happen more," so I don't know, I, I, my feeling is, is that it's okay. The question I, I, you know, DOT's gotta worry about the access. I can't imagine putting a frontage road in there, probably off to the church's driveway or something like that. I don't know how that's gonna work, but that's, that's not our worry.
Right.
So in the motion, if we move approval of this, and, to whom?
The county.
Back to the county.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I should have added that into the motion. Yep, it'll go straight back to the county. We don't have an active two-mile agreement, so technically, they don't need to do it, so we don't need to go through the county to, or city council to get that formal resolution at this time, but she still wanted the review, just in case you guys had doubts on her.
No, and I, I appreciate that, that our review of it, even on short notice, I think it's good to have and good to do, and I agree with John on the fact that it fits perfectly with our future land use strategy for that area, so.
Pretty soon we'll have all the way to Shell Rock, just loaded up with commercial buildings.
Yeah.
Well, I'll move that the planning and zoning commission mark amend approval of this rezoning of the three acres to the county, from agricultural to commercial.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, that motion passes as well.
I will ask this question, is there any hope that we will get a, an agreement with the county on the, on the, well, the portions of the two-mile limit that we do want to have some say-so in?
We started questioning a little bit more this spring again. Lindsay and I just kind of put it on hold until late summer came. Breamer County doesn't, Breamer County planning and zoning does not want to necessarily enter into one, or doesn't want to see too many changes to what was existing. I think that's been the challenge of the past, as there has been staff wanting to increase the changes, different districts, things like that, but I plan to bring it up to her again here in the next month or so. And Dave and I had sat down a while back with Lindsay, and was Bill in that conversation as well? Or was it just-
He wasn't present, but I think, yeah.
So I would imagine I'm gonna ask again to bring Dave at least in with Lindsay and then their chair. Last time I asked, their chair said no, don't ask again.
Because I just dread to think of, all of a sudden, if, you know, somebody proposes a residential subdivision to this corridor, you know, that could be difficult.
So yes, we'll still track, it hasn't been in favor of us in the last couple of conversations.
Anything else on that?
No, thank you.
Yes, all right. Item G, your business, seeing none. We'll move on. H, staff updates?
None.
Okay. I, commission updates, what I would say, I had an ambitious goal to have a council update in front of you guys before this discussion, but I'll use this discussion to communicate that I am working on a council update for the 26th, and I will email that out in advance like I did last year, and ask for some feedback, comments, et cetera, as a draft, as we work towards the final update for the city council on the 26th.
Thank you.
Good, that's all I have on that. Any others?
Please, your.
They are adjourned.
Thank you.